I show seven o'clock, so if we could all rise to open the meeting. As usual, we'll start with a pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, good evening, everybody. We've moved into October and the weather's pretty nasty outside today. We had some great summer meetings where daylight was out there and warm temperatures, but this one is dark and rain. But I guess we can't complain because we had, what, two or three, almost three weeks of impeccable weather, which got us through Hardscrabble Day and a few other events. So we'll take some rain. I thought we'd do, as you can see, Jay Trapp's not here. He had a conflicting meeting event happen. We are essentially a week early because next week is Columbus Day. And the board, we also think of, it looks like in November, like Jen mentioned last month, our second Monday, which our normal meeting also hits on Veterans' Day. So we'll have to think about, before we close out tonight, do we want to go the 4th or the week after, the 18th? But we could think about that. Before we get into the minutes and so forth, we did have a public hearing scheduled for tonight on, we use the acronym of CDBG. It's a Community Development Block Grant. It's essentially federal HUD money that moves down to the county, and then various munis within the county apply. We've had good luck, good success in years past, over the past probably 12 years. You might remember that with an improving population demographic here in the village, which means we have a higher family gross per capita income right now in the village than in years past, it precludes us from having a full shot at all the opportunities within the block grant projects or block grant funding. And we get limited to what would be considered ADA or projects that help us comply with American with Disabilities Act. On the flip side of that, our building's in good shape. And in years past, we have thrown in our $100,000 range allocation to the town of Red Hook to help them get more money for their projects at Direct Park and with the special needs field they're trying to build out there. Long story short, we did have an idea this year. And I'll probably open a public hearing. I'm just giving a little background for those in the audience and refreshing the board's memory. But we probably could do this in the format of a public hearing. So we were scheduled for one to open up the meeting, so I would move that we open a public hearing on the CDBG projects, ideas. There's a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
So if the clerk could show, we open it up. And I'll continue my talk. So with that precursor, back history, what I was describing there, we did look at one that might comply, and the board will remember, was trying to get a sidewalk along Cherry Street for the newly revamped outlook of the Almondorf Inn. And one of our board members brought it up at one of our last, most recent meetings, that he had reached out, it was Jay who reached out. We always do this, try to get a precursor opinion from Dutchess County Planning, will our project meet the requirements? And then also get into the pile to be possibly funded. The bad news was the sidewalk in and of itself was not deemed enough of an ADA component. And so really, there's no sense us doing the pre-engineering and the grant application, in my opinion, to get something that's going to be turned down, because we did get that precursor indicator from the folks that look at the grants. Like we all know, a grant gets you, you know, the application gets you in the door. Whether or not you actually get the grant is part B. But when you're told that your first blush opinion of the project is you're not going to get to the second stage, it's really not worth our effort to do it. We talked about some other ideas, but nothing truly ADA has jumped out. I talked to the town a little bit. They don't really have anything this year themselves that they were looking to sync, that we could sync up with to help them. So that being said, the reason we have the public hearing is for the public to comment on any block grant ideas. But like I said when I introduced the topic, they have to make the place more accessible, meaning our building, the sidewalks, other facilities. In our case, our main operating facility is this building, and it was rehabbed 13, 14 years ago. It's pretty accessible throughout between the elevator and different sidewalk curb cuts out front.
And I think the other thing, too, is, because we fall into, in order to qualify for Community Development Block Grant to get $150,000, you have to be under what they call the low to moderate income, median household income range, and we're above that line. So what we do qualify for is ADA compliant things. So it means, you know, putting ramps in, intersections that we could do that, or removing obstructions on existing sidewalks that put them into compliance with ADA requirements. But new sidewalks is what we would love to have. We see a lot of new sidewalks in Tivoli as a result of the Community Development Block Grant, but they're under the low to moderate income range, so they do qualify for more money. And they use it wisely with the sidewalk system there. So we're kind of in a little bind as far as what we can use this money for, and we keep our eyes open on any existing conditions within our sidewalk systems that we have that we can remediate and make more accessible. And what we found so far just doesn't comply with those regulations. So unfortunately, that's where we stand. But we're open to more ideas. If people see, you know, something that's obstructing a sidewalk, and I think the last one we had was up at Coburn's Laundry, where there was an island there, and a sidewalk was missing. We had a ramp going in, and we did, we were able to reconstruct that and put that in compliance. So that's an example of what can be done.
Pardon me?
Is this, just the concrete's coming up? Yeah, sometimes when concrete is first put in, they put salt on it, and that salt, if you don't let it cure for at least one year without salt. Yeah, because it's more cured, you know? We noticed the same problem out front of the village building here. We replaced some siding, and we put salt on it and just blew it up. So that's probably the reason.
But anyway, we've looked hard. We did have one impediment that we came across in talking to a resident, and that is a parent of a blind child in the village. And we reached out to DOT because one of our bigger problems is that many of our main streets, quote unquote, are DOT highways, essentially. So we have a limited amount of authority and jurisdiction over them. But we did learn, I think we mentioned in the last meeting, that the current crosswalk buttons there are not truly state-of-the-art. And we're hearing that you can actually, are they all four audible now, just one? Okay. What I'm getting at is, again, it's a DOT, it's a state activity, but we did ask them to change those crosswalks to be the audible type that you are instructed to wait by hearing, not just by looking at a walk sign. And the good news was DOT said they had them in their inventory, and they could do that without a major two-year delay. We've got some other projects underway, our mid-block crosswalks, but those are funded, and they're in DOT's hands. So, long story short, we haven't come up with the next new thing to push to block grant people.
We have heard of people suggesting that the village install more mid-block crosswalks, and we have looked at certain areas. One in particular is from the old CVS parking lot to the post office. And back during the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, we looked at that, where there was money available. And because of the multiple curb cuts there on the CVS side, and then on the post office side, where we would put a handicap ramp, there's a DOT catch basin. So that's the reason we didn't put one there, couldn't put one there. So we're still looking for those solutions. And as Ed had said, we're expecting some signaling devices, lights around the three crosswalks on South Broadway at this point. And we've been, we did get a grant for those, and it's been a while.
Didn't there used to be a crosswalk at the post office?
Never.
I thought there was striping there back in the day.
Years ago, I thought there was.
I don't remember any. Do you remember any crosswalks there? It wasn't ADA compliant either?
No, I don't think it was.
Yeah, because many, many, almost a decade ago, Brent and I walked with DOT up there hunting, to insert wherever we can. But that is the problem. You can't force the handicap person to be in an active driveway and hitting, so if you stand up there. And even East Market, it's a similar thing. We've pretty much inserted them where they can fit. Anyway, so we're in the middle of a public hearing. We've chatted, we've been working on thinking about any thoughts, input from the public, public out there. So George, the Cherry Street, doesn't look like that's going to be moving. I would move then that we close the public hearing on the block grant application.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're out of that. And we opened the regular meeting earlier. We'll go to our normal business first. We do have two sets of minutes, which, the main meeting was September 9th, and then we had a workshop on September 19th. They've been circulated, I reviewed them, and they went off to all of you, too. I know at the last meeting, we asked the clerk, in her role as treasurer, in that case, to update some of the transactions in the water fund. She did that after the last meeting. I know, and circulated something to us all. That being said, I would ask if there are any other additions, alterations, or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We have Lara Hart sitting in today because our regular clerk slash treasurer did have some hand surgery. And although she can do some computer-type work, she was not quite ready to take direct notes. So Lara, thank you for sitting in tonight. I'll read the treasurer's report. And as far as account balances, we have, in general fund, we have $760,859. In the water fund, $57,777. Trust and agency, $19,615. Petty cash, $49. Village Green, $4,149. Hardscrabble, $10,563. Health insurance, $5,483. Sewer fund, $25,382. And the treasurer's been adding that short-term asset water reserve, right now showing $33,635 in it. As far as expenses for the month, so these are described as the expenses, the balances I read are what's in the accounts after these expenses. General fund expenses were $127,446. Water fund, $37,084. Trust and agency, $19,615. And that would be her submission. And so this is October, so we've had June, July, August, September. So we've had four months into the current fiscal year. So most folks should be at about 33% of budget. So if you want to spot-check through the detailed spreadsheet later, you can see who's trending best and who might need a prompt from us to make sure they remain aware of the budget constraints.
I did notice one of the budget lines that's pretty close are over, and that would be our highway. And that's because of all the work we've done so far in the village. So that includes the new sidewalks here that we took out and replaced, did some work. There were four DOT catch basins that we were obligated to repair on Market Street. And that was pretty much.
Spent a lot of chips money.
Then we repaid portions of Cambridge and Amherst. So that was, pretty much, did us in for the year.
Spent a lot of money. Then we made Brent panic a little bit because we also improved the municipal parking lot slash celebrations center there. But we did create a separate budget line item for that, because that's going to be reimbursed for us from a grant. But those numbers are in the budget here, too.
And if we moved money over from the line of credit into that budget line at this point, I know it wasn't in there when I signed the vouchers, but...
Yeah, as of what we've got, we passed that Resolution 39, I think it was, where we would put $45,000 from Salisbury Bank into the line of credit.
That hasn't appeared on the spreadsheet yet.
I totaled up our expenses today, because a few were in the voucher packs here today, the Easy Street and a few last-minute bills. And I'm happy to say, we were projecting $45,000. I think we spent $44,894. I think we were like $6 or $16.
Very impressive.
Below. So, but yeah, we're getting ready to have Salisbury move that money to us. We got to get the total, and we stayed within the 45.
That would certainly help that budget line out.
Yeah. Good, so we have the treasurer's report read. I don't know where Jennifer went. We have three of us left here.
It has been moved in, by the way.
Yeah. Jen, we're looking to approve the treasurer's report. Reading her data, and I'll just remind you all, read the back pages, too, so you understand it best. But is there, I move that we approve it. Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
I guess while we're on the topic of money and so forth, September 30th, we did our, we have to file once a year with the New York State Controller's Office. It's called an AUD. Essentially, it retakes, reconfigures our numbers with our controller and sends it up to them. And there's a little bit of back and forth when they look at it. It's separate and distinct from a real, true audit. We also have that working at the same time. A real audit is more of a nitpicking examination of almost line by line the expenses. But this is something where the controller asks us to recap our performance, and our regular attendees have seen this graph, and so has the board. But when this administration came into office, the village was in the negative, losing money. You want to be above a black line here at all times. And the controller wants you to have about 15% of your budget in a, essentially, fund balance condition where you could use it to pick up an emergency event. So this board picked 15% of $2 million to $350,000, so we climbed to that, and we held it. And there were a couple of deliberate decisions. I don't see this as a negative right here. First of all, it's not really steep. And secondly, the board might recall, we used some fund balance to put some money down on a big snowplow truck we had to buy and a few things. But the newest balance, the newest number from the submission we sent off September 30th is $361,000 in fund balance. So that's that point right there. And like I said, we want to hover around this line, and that's what we look to be doing. Doesn't mean threats are over, we're still fragile, and we still have tax caps. Sounds like a lot of money, but in our world, it's not. So just wanted to show the board that. Michelle sent it up Monday, the 30th of September, which was a week from today, I guess. So I plugged it into our data in our spreadsheets. A good thing. Let's see, so we did treasurer police report. We have for the month of September, these hover around the same number, 354 incidents, breaks out 263 in the village of Red Hook, 88 in the town of Red Hook, and 3 in the village of Tivoli. Tickets issued total is 145, breaks out 86 in the village of Red Hook, and 59 in the town of Red Hook. I don't see any parking tickets issued last month. Either we reminded the scaffloes, or we weren't out there enough. We'll have to find out about that. Arrests resulting in all that activity were 23, 19 in the village, and 4 in the town. Now, let's see. I think I've spoken enough for now. I'll cover trustee Trapp's report. But Jen, are you prepared to work over there?
All right, we'll do materials management first. We sold $2,481 in garbage tags and paid out $1,005.06. We had 9.36 tons of garbage and 3.96 tons of recycling, which breaks down as follows: 0.53 tons of cardboard, 2.14 tons of paper, and 1.26 tons of co-mingled. I say this every month, but due to global issues, it's not just us. Recycling has to be separated. We alternate every other week with co-mingled being one week, and then cardboard and paper being another, and it's separated. I just found out a little bit ago, a repair cafe will be happening at the community center on October 26th, which kind of falls into materials management. I've been a couple of times, and they can repair anything: jewelry, and bikes, and sweaters, and lamps, and vacuum cleaners. So that's a good way to have something repaired instead of throwing it out. And that's, again, October 26th at the community center. We made it through Hardscrabble. I think it went okay. Again, we never know, because we're just running around the whole day. But it was a beautiful day, the band was great, attendance seemed good. So moving on to our next, to our next trick, which is like, oh yeah, we got to do Halloween. So Village Halloween, if you want to hold that up, it's not fit for publication, because there is a, there is a spelling mistake on it.
What type of remains?
That will be Saturday, October 26th. As we've done in years past, we're going to do a chili cook-off at noon, with the proceeds going to Team Nora. We're going to have trick-or-treating around the village, and pumpkin painting from 1 to 3 with the annual costume parade at 2:45. And then the next day is Dog Halloween, which is run by Paws Boutique, which is one of the merchants in the village. That'll be Sunday, October 27th, from 11 to 2, with nonprofit animal-related information booths, and a canine costume contest and parade, which they had asked that we close off the front portion of the parking lot for that. It's nonprofit groups, it's, you know, mostly rescues and that sort of thing. If we, we do it for them every year. What I would ideally like to do is close it from the day before through after their dog event, because it seems every single year, either you or I have to wake somebody up in their bathrobe to move their car. Because we, you know, you do it for like Saturday, and then you do it Sunday, and there's cars left over invariably overnight. So ideally, since we have to close the parking lot for our Village Halloween, I'd like to ideally shut down at least most of it. I mean, not most of it, we're just talking the front part for those two days.
Yeah, I can work with highly. It's just that it does preclude some restaurant parking and things that's Saturday night.
Do you like to like that?
Well, I think.
Guy in his bathrobe, as I've done every year.
I think they're more aware of it now. Dan's been putting notices on the cars, so.
Okay. But that's okay for them to do?
I think so. We've done it in the past. We asked them to show who they actually have participating. It looks like it's things ranging from SPCA to not-for-profit type things. So it seems like a fun event, and it seems to draw people, and it's, yeah.
It's totally adorable.
So we'll go for it, yeah.
Okay, cool. I will let them know. And then we have Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival, which will be Saturday, November 2nd, with chocolate and food vendors, and that's organized by the Red Hook Chamber of Commerce.
Good. So how are we trending in our materials management world? Let's see.
Average.
Yeah.
Oh, garbage tags are now available at TasteBuds. If you forget that you, on Sunday, that you did not buy tags, you can go to TasteBuds and pick them up.
Hey, it's open late, and if you need, if you drink coffee late at night or a nice snack, spend a little money there, too.
We're in hot chocolate season, and my daughter tells me that TasteBuds has the best hot chocolate in all the land.
Uh-oh. I think we need equal time. Who else has a restaurant out there, anybody?
Well, the places are friendly.
I heard J&amp;J's really good, and Annabelle's.
And she does her own fuentes. No, they do. No, they all do, but it's.
Maybe, looking around at our audience, sometimes we offer this as an option for folks. We get into the business part of the meeting, and then, meaning this is routine department and committee reports, then we do regular business, and then we open usually in public comment session toward the end of our meeting, which makes people have to wait a long time sometimes. I'd be willing, if the board's okay, we could break. If somebody besides our regular attendees needs and wants to say something, so I would ask that we move into a public comment now, if anybody is so inclined, and then you can get out. We ask that you do speak, we do have this, because we go direct feed from our mics to Panda. We are the most high-tech meeting in Panda World. So if you want to come up and say anything, George, I know we'll hang around. You can, we can open a second one later if you want to partake and listen and have follow-up questions.
That's why it works the less, right?
Yeah, right. That's good.
And for the NMU people, I think that's why you're here. I covered that in my monthly report, so we can jump to that or wait until after?
Well, Brent is a great man, and he's got great reports, but I think maybe we'll let you summarize it.
Okay.
Why don't you summarize that now, and then we'll go to public comment.
Okay. So what we're doing, we've been meeting every Friday, the zoning review committee. So what we've looked at, I submitted a written description of the new zones, both NMU and general business district. So our proposal, as you know, is to increase the size of the general business district, particularly going east. So where it stops now on Grave Street, it'll continue to portions of the current R10,000, and also consume the current highway business district. So that'll all become general business. There was a section that we are proposing, along with the maps, that are drawn up, and they are done at this point, that would, currently in our general business district, we do not allow single-family, two-family houses in GBD, and there are existing houses there that we want to preserve as single-family homes, with all the benefits of getting loans for expansion, that kind of thing. So we have worked on that. In the NMU zone, there were originally five properties going south that we were going to include, plus one on, I think it's Elizabeth Street, right by the chocolate factory, Hobson's. So that has been included, but we also are increasing the NMU, which will start at the library, going all the way to Firehouse Plaza. So all those properties that were originally in our 10,000 now will be part of the NMU as well. And on, on the other side, from Fraley Street, all the way up to Migler Relish property. So that'll all be NMU. So we're expanding GBD and NMU. NMU, we're not changing any zoning regulations at this point, because that's pretty much good, you know, preserves the character, residences, residential is an allowed use in that. We are waiting on the maps to be produced for the board to go in. Those are now done, and should be submitted hopefully soon. So then the board will take up deliberation, take up with also our village attorney to make sure what we have is legal, and then start the public review process. So we've been moving forward. Every Friday, like I said, we've been meeting and moving forward.
Brent, does that include the lot church currently owned, trying to sell it?
Yep. Yep, so it was on this side, on the east side of South Broadway, the properties from south of the library all the way up, including the churches, or the Lutheran church. So they have been recently subdivided. There was one property they were trying to offer for sale for commercial use. Now they can legitimately offer that for, it'd be a use within NMU. On the opposite side, from Fraley Street, south all the way through, that also includes St. Christopher's Church and Christ Church. So they would be also in NMU, plus a couple residential properties there, and they could stay as they are and still enjoy the benefits of expansion and that kind of stuff. But just give it more use. So what we're, the premise of all this was also some of the concerns of some of the residents and businesses in NMU, but also because of the sewer system. We wanted, especially on East Market Street, to give those properties more uses for their property, because, as a result of the sewer system. So that's the direction we're heading. So we're moving.
Yeah, we did have it on our regular business section of the agenda for tonight. So he, we jumped him ahead a little bit for that. What he mentioned, and it's been a hard-working zoning review committee, they meet every Friday from 4:00 p.m. to whenever you get done, I guess. It's tech six, it's technical. We can't speak how the board will vote, but it sounds like they've put a lot of good forethought and detailed thought into it, where it'll probably work out. You know, it's a, but it's, there is a couple of formal steps where, once they get a map and a few things to us, we look at it, then we set a public hearing, and then take some more comment. And those, like all public hearings are publicly noticed, so people from anywhere can come in. So keep your eyes for that, you know? You'd certainly be part of that. And then we're essentially amending our zoning code, so it's a formal process where we, that doesn't happen in one meeting usually.
And what we're trying to do is put, you know, we have a pattern book now that we have adopted into our comprehensive plan, and so we're taking some of the principles within that pattern book. within that pattern book, together with more uses, you know, working, looking at our parking regulations to make it less restrictive for parking, um, trying to encourage interconnecting parking lots, um, actually setting some, um, more uses that could be used and then more streamlined, hopefully more easily read and understood zoning code. That makes a little bit more sense and, um, it's, that, that whole process will take time, but we want to get the map done. So we can expand those districts right now, um, so people can benefit from the increased uses available. So that's the goal. It'll be a multi-phased kind of thing, but we want to get that map done first and make that, the new boundaries, um, to put them into play at this point, so.
So what's the time?
Well, Ken, we'll introduce you. That's Ken Miglerelli asking that question because the camera probably couldn't pick it up. He's a property owner within the proposed NMU area. I would think 120 days, long, 90, short. What do you think? Get the map, get it reviewed, get lawyers will have to like fine tune the insertion to the zoning code. Shouldn't be too much longer than that, right? Like four months, plus or minus.
Yeah, depends if we have to go through State Environmental Quality Review Act. I mean, we're changing the comp plan. We're, actually we were eliminating one zone altogether, you know, so that, that's going to affect a lot of properties and, you know, in some good way and some will be, we'll have a lot of questions to ask. So we want to give everyone an opportunity to ask their, their questions and express their concerns so we can all think about what we're doing and making sure it's the right decision to go forward, so.
The early next year.
Yeah. Hopefully you'll still be shoveling snow.
[laughing]
Or not, you know, but.
And overall, I think it looks good and we're trying to build a certain protection, like Brent said, in that GBD conversion on East Market. That'll work for the residential folks. It won't hurt them at all. So anyway, that was, I think, two of you, but then Juliet was standing up. I don't think she's here on an NMU issue, but, uh, would you like to stay or would you like to talk?
But I have to stay anyway, so it's up to you.
Well, hang out then. Okay. We like a bigger audience.
Is the public comment period?
You got more?
I have something else to talk about.
Yeah, public comment, phase one, yes. But you need to take a mic and stand by an lectern.
And I'll go after it.
Stand by what?
By the lectern there so she can get a good, just say who you are and.
Oh, Ken Miglerelli. Uh, I have a question about, uh, I know they proposed this years ago, uh, a light by the Amherst Firehouse Lane. Uh, do you know where that, if that's even being addressed or?
I know we're on a list, but it's not, it's not.
I'm sure once the development goes and they're going to put a light at Farm. No, they're not putting a light there?
Immediately.
I'm shaking my head no for those that are watching camera but not seeing me. Well, on your first question, we're very, very aware of the Amherst Road situation and it's complicated by numerous things. One is the intersections were built, they don't offset true right across from each other and true 90 degrees. It's been a nightmare with DOT.
But, but just real quick to interject, we did discuss this with DOT on several occasions.
Oh, multiple times, yeah.
I think we've had that, what, the deputy, what is he, the commissioner?
We had a guy from Albany come down, I remember, but he was deputy commissioner of the whole, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, there, there are real hangups ranging from financial and working with DOT is difficult, but the biggest thing is they expect and need the, the intersection to be redesigned on the east side to be a true 90-degree four-way meet. And we've been arguing, well, why can't in the state age, state, state of technology, can't invent a signaling system that can work with offset roads? But they don't want to hear that. And we've asked them, what they do is they study traffic and it's a, it's a state highway is the problem. And, uh, they create what they call a warrant and they've told us they see nothing in a near to outreach future where they're going to do anything there. And, um.
Okay. We're on the list and they broke the list down. And I don't know if this list came from Poughkeepsie Duchess County Transportation Council, which I think is this Duchess County Transportation Council, but they, they broke these, these three different categories are short-term, medium-term, and long-term. And we are in the medium-term, but I could tell you from our experience with these signals for the crosswalks that have been brought, we were on the short-term on that. It's been what?
At least two.
Yeah, three years.
Okay.
Not real short.
Just what I asked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Same thing. Could you state your name and go from there?
Sure. Juliet Harrison. Um, I figured I might as well talk about this now since it relates to, um, what Jen Norris was discussing before. And I know there's nothing we can do to change this year, but I'd like to bring into the conversation about the Village Halloween celebration, um, for future thought. Uh, I own a business in the village. Um, I also am a resident in one of the busier Halloween trick-or-treating neighborhoods. Um, what concerns me is, well, there are several things that concern me. First of all, the trick-or-treating in the retail establishments, um, is a hardship that we were never asked whether or not we wanted to participate in. Um, I understand that we can opt out of it, but of course, I'm not going to close my business on a Saturday in October and I'm not going to put a sign on my door that says no trick-or-treating because that would really be a problem. Um, I will tell you in my experience of having a business, um, a retail business on the street for the past four Halloweens, uh, that the majority of the parents stay outside and send their kids in to get candy and then those kids run around or whatever and then leave. Um, so they're not, it's not as if we're inviting the adults in to really take a look around and see what we have to offer as far as retail, um, businesses in the community. So what I'm also discovering is that because I do also do trick-or-treating in this neighborhood back here on the Fraley Street neighborhood, um, I understand that originally it was a nice solution for people who lived out in the country, whose kids didn't have an opportunity to trick-or-treat in their own neighborhoods. Um, but what I'm seeing, and I see it over and over again, is the same kids that trick-or-treat on a Saturday before Halloween in my business also trick-or-treat at my house on Halloween. So these kids are getting double trick-or-treating. That said, additionally, I've seen on Red Hook Moms and other sites, parents saying that they're throwing away half of the candy that their kids get. So I am putting money in to candy for hundreds of kids, both at my business and at my home, and those parents are throwing it away. That's a hardship that our struggling businesses in this community can't afford. And we have some seriously, I mean, if, if they can't afford advertising for their businesses, um, in things like the Northern Duchess News, then this is, this is asking a lot. And again, my main concern is people are throwing the candy away, um, and the merchants have never been asked. And I think that's important, that we are asked whether or not we want to participate. So, um, in the day and age when we are all concerned about childhood obesity, I don't think that we need to be encouraging kids to trick-or-treat twice. Um, and I offer a solution. I think that the parade is a fabulous idea, the costume parade. I think the chili cook-off is a great idea. Is it possible that in the future, since I know we're not changing things for this year, that we do the parade and have everybody come back to the village parking lot at the end of the parade and give out small bags of treats? One little paper bag filled with a couple of treats for each kid who participates so that they're not coming into the businesses and they're not, um, and you're not asking the businesses to cover the expense of this or not even asking, you're not assuming the businesses will cover the expense for this. Um, I also have noticed that a lot of the kids who come trick-or-treating into the businesses don't do the parade. They're exhausted by then. They can't do both. They don't have that kind of energy, these little kids. Um, so I think it's a pointless, um, event. And I, as I said, I think it, it's a hardship on, on those of us who have retail businesses in the community. So that's what I would like to hear is that there's a possible consideration for doing it differently in the future.
Well, sure. We're always up to good suggestions. I think, just to be clear, this year, the trick-or-treating is set for 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So folks listening, watching, it's not an all-day kind of a thing. Uh, we, we've always felt, I think, developing a vibrant village is part and parcel of our goal here. And I personally think the street celebrations and attracting as many souls and eyeballs in as we can is good. You do raise some things, you know, trick-or-treating, Halloween, to me, they go hand-in-hand. Um, we could, if you look at what we're doing, trick-or-treating is from 1:00 to 3:00. The library's going to pop up, library with free books. So we're trying to concentrate, push some kids to reading. Uh, that's courtesy of the library. That's 1:00 to 3:00. Um, kids' costume parade is 2:45. And all day long, we, uh, the village, the hardscrabble committee buys the, uh, pumpkins for pumpkin painting and Funshine Nursery School and, uh, the library and ourselves are there coordinating that. So it's not just trick-or-treating, but, um, I was a kid once, trick-or-treating and Halloween go together. It's a.
You trick-or-treat on Halloween. They do. We get hundreds. You know that, Ed. We get hundreds in our neighborhood. Do those kids need to do it twice? They don't in Rhinebeck. They have a wonderful Halloween parade. They don't trick-or-treat in the businesses.
Yeah, we, we're not Rhinebeck, but in time, I think at night, the kids trick-or-treat in their neighborhoods and your businesses, most of them are closed at that point. So it's not, you hit them twice, but.
It doesn't do anything for the businesses. I have not once seen anyone who has come in on Halloween, come back and shop in my store. It doesn't, Hardscrabble does nothing, Apple Blossom does nothing, and this does nothing. I'm not saying we can't have community events. I think community events are wonderful. They belong to the community. But this is a hardship that you've never asked the merchants whether or not we wanted to participate in or whether or not it benefits us at all. You have imposed it on us.
We're, we're sounding very terrible imposing Halloween and Winterfest, but anyway.
I'm sorry if I sound like the Halloween Grinch. Hundreds of kids coming.
Juliet, I, I made notes. We're good. Thank you for your comments.
You never want to hear what someone else has to say if it disagrees with you.
Anyway, we have a meeting. Thank you for your comments. Whoever wants to hang out can hang out. Um, we skipped, let's see, we had Jen go. Mr. Lang, you want to talk about water?
Sure. So I have the, the water report for the month of September and the water treatment facility treated 7,086,900 total gallons, which is an average of 236,200 gallons a day, uh, which is coming down from a peak in the, the summertime, which is, I think, expected. And actually, if you, uh, I have the daily usage numbers here and it certainly looks like the last week of September, the numbers were coming down considerably. So I think we'll expect to see, uh, a significant drop in usage for this month. Um, there were three bacteriological samples taken, uh, during the month of September and those all came back, uh, absent of coliform or E. coli, which is always reassuring. Um, and the water treatment plant used 85 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, uh, which is an average daily use of 2.83 gallons per day. Um, on other notes, there seems to have been some progress on some of the outstanding work orders, which is good to see. Uh, so some of those issues with, uh, individual meters or, or, or problems with meters have been addressed. And so hopefully that, that list will get shorter as the weeks go by.
Yeah, we'll give an update in the rest, regular business too on that, Charlie. So it'll be good.
Right.
Yeah, so 2:36, Charlie's analysis, and we'll talk more about that later. We have a few water items in the regular business section. I guess I should find the planning zoning pages and read for Mr. Trapp. Let's see. Getting a last-minute edit here. Um, wow, okay. It looks like, we'll start with the beginning monthly trustee report for the month. I guess this would be September that these are recording here. So building permits issued were eight and, um, certificates of occupancy issued, one. Certificates of compliance, Larry just changed a three to a four. I guess there are four on the list, but the, the count said three. So there, there are four there. So it's just a typographical clerical correction. Municipal searches, there were one, two, three, four. Those are usually done at refinancing or when people are selling their properties. Orders to remedy, zero in that particular month. And then stop work orders, one. Um, it does say here with an asterisk that it was remedied. Does that mean it? Do you know, since Larry also wears the hat of a administrator in the planning and building department, is it truly remedied?
Yeah, it's correct.
Okay, okay. Um, quarter parents is zero. Fire inspections were six. Complaints were three. Inspections were five. And planning board actions, it looks like two signs were approved. A lot line approval was granted in an area. Subdivision application was, let's see, subdivision application were located. So I guess that's not resolved. It's tabled to October 10th. There it is. ZBA, as we mentioned with George before the meeting, they've been busier than ever. One, two, three, variance applications and an interpretation for a total of four items on their agenda last month. What did that result in? As you know, building permits and certain things require fees here in the village and the report from that department shows, um, an income revenue stream of $2,093.95. So $2,094. That'll be that report. So we'll let Mr. Deputy Mayor Calachek, you ready to work?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll start with the Village Green Committee's monthly report. Current balances of the Village Green Committee's related budget accounts are as follows. Community beautification, $4,000. Shade tree contractual, $10,500. And the Village Green checking account, as announced in the treasury report, is $4,192.92. There were no Village Green Committee meetings held during the month of September. Um, the highway department is currently preparing a list of trees in the village right-ofways for removal or pruning. I think it's going to be a short list this year. Uh, mostly pruning, less removal. And the list will be reviewed by the Village Green Committee and approved by the Village Board of Trustees. And residents and businesses interested in having a tree planted on their adjacent street right-ofway or volunteering for planting days or donating money for the Village Green Committee, Community Beautification projects may contact David Pearson, myself, or the village clerk. Um, we're getting ready, as I mentioned last month, for our November annual fall planting. So I think we've secured about nine sites already and, um, looking for the magic number of 15, but we would, we would certainly love more younger volunteers. That would be great.
Do you have a November date, did you say?
No, that's, it's kind of either, it's been falling the last couple of years on the same day as the Chocolate Festival, but it all depends on when the nursery delivers the trees. So as soon as we get the trees.
It'll be early.
Because they are bare root. We like to get them in, in the ground as soon as possible. So the first two weeks, I think in November would be the dates. Um, the highway department monthly report for September, the highway department is currently picking up brush and lawn debris on every first and third Monday or when their work schedule and weather permits. Um, and they'll be doing this up until we start our fall leaf pickup. Um, residents are reminded to place lawn debris curbside and not in the streets and to limit the size of the brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet with tree limbs and branches no larger than six inches and. branches no larger than six inches in diameter. Brush dead includes tree trunks, stumps, grass clippings, or building materials will not be picked up. A catch basin is in need of repair in front of Key Bank on West Market Street, I think there was a cone that sometimes is there, sometimes gets run over, but there is a depression right there, so we're looking at estimates for that. Excuse me. And no revenue from the sale of scrap metal was generated during the month of September. Total revenue generated in this fiscal year is $592. And since inception of the scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, $29,299.47 has been generated. And the proceeds for this program go toward the purchase of tools and equipment for the village highway, materials management, and water departments. Anyone interested in donating scrap metal may contact the highway department at 758-8600, leave a message there, or you can contact the clerk's office. And the highway department personnel will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The Red Hook Infrastructure and Task Force monthly report. It's kind of short, I don't know if you understand.
Short.
The sewer.
Doesn't look too short to me.
The sewer project. Meetings were held on September 6, 13, 20, 24, and 27. We reviewed proposed amendments to the Red Hook Sewer Use Law regarding the village's monitoring of water usage and property owner's responsibility to upgrade their sewer system components that conform to proper sizing requirements as specified by the Dutchess County Department of Health comments of August 20. So we are consulting with our attorney at this point on that one. And we also reviewed the responses by our engineer, C.T. Mail, to the Dutchess County DOH comments of August 20 regarding odor control, pump size, and data for the treatment plant, equalization tank, and individual subject tank sizing requirements for peak flow and emergency conditions. We're coming close, I hope, to a conclusion. I know we have all the data in from our contributing subcontractors, and we're hoping that stuff gets in this week, right?
That answers all of Dutchess County's remaining questions?
We are hoping.
Yes. Unless they come up with some new ones.
Unless they come up...
That's what seems to be happening.
So we've been working, the engineers, the attorneys, Ed and I have been, on a weekly basis, in contact with everybody and pushing. The next step for us is to go to DEC. So the speedies permit transfer from Red Hook Common Sewage Works Corporation to the village of Red Hook.
Right.
And then also, we had to amend the discharge of the speedies permit to increase it...
Right.
In anticipation of the increased size of the treatment plant.
Of the plant and the flow. But all that has to wait until the Dutchess County...
Yeah, they, DOH has been in contact with DOH, DOH has been in contact with DEC, requesting that they wait until they are done, DOH has done with the work.
Because do you see that already signed off on that?
Right. And so our schedule, we're still hoping that we go out for bed in November, before the end of the year, and so we can award the contracts and start construction late winter, early spring of next year. And it's an 18-month construction schedule. I know there's businesses that want to expand, there's businesses that want to come in, there's, it's holding up everything, and we've been in DOH land since...
Has it been 12 months?
April, oh, more than, April 2018.
Okay.
So we're way past the year.
Yeah.
And it's, it is very frustrating. So we want them to do their job, we want a safe system, but we try to remain patient.
You'll get there, Brad.
As we move forward.
Yes.
The Red Hook Route 9, Old Farm Road Water Main Loop Project. Are you talking about this, Ed, at all? Nope.
Yeah, I put in water, I was going to touch on loop, but you go ahead.
So we had meeting on, meetings on September 13 and 27 that included our village engineer and owners down on Old Farm Road and Route 9, which would be South Broadway. And we also reviewed the Dutchess County Department of Health comments of August 26 and responses by the LRC group of August 28. So we're still waiting, I believe, on DOH, right? On that project as well?
Yeah, it's a baby version, it's not as big and bad as the sewer timeline, but it's a DOH-related.
So the water, the Water Main Loop Project will connect dead-end water mains to provide more efficient, safer, and more easily repaired water distribution services to properties along Old Farm Road, which includes traditions at Red Hook and the Ross property, and South Broadway, north of M&amp;T Bank. The costs associated with the project, including engineering services, filing, and construction, will be paid for by private property owners benefiting from village municipal water connections, and costs for permitting and construction oversight will be covered by the village of Red Hook. So it's a good deal for us, a good deal for the property owners, and hopefully, that'll move forward quickly too.
Sounds like it might be a spring building project too, though.
Yeah. But it would definitely help our water system out and still benefit those properties. The village of Red Hook Water Distribution System Improvements, Administrative Service and Administrative Service Improvements, meetings, that's a long title. Meetings were held on September 6, 13, and 27 with our village engineers and our water operator, and we're doing investigations right now regarding the use of municipality software to track repairs, routine maintenance and repairs, and billing payment methods, and documentation of maintenance, repairs, improvements, and existing conditions. To go along with that, the application of the village of Red Hook PFOA and PFOS Removal and Water System Resiliency Upgrade Project was submitted to the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation on September 13. The village of Red Hook Water System Improvement, improvements including the PFOA and PFOS Removal and Resiliency Upgrade Project will provide for various improvements to the village water system. These improvements include the installation and construction of a carbon filter system at the water treatment plant, reconditioning of the interior of the elevated water storage tank on Tower Street, and the insertion of a pumping station at the Red Hook Town, Red Hook Village Interconnect on Willowbrook Road. The $1.8 million project will be funded upon the award of the 2019 Water Infrastructure Improvement Act grant program, which, if we get it, will cover 60%, 60% of the cost, or $1 million. And the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Loan Program will pay for the rest. And this is an $800,000 loan at interest rate of 3.5% for a 30-year term, that's where it is at this point in time. The Office of United States Senator Kirsten Gillibrand sponsored a forum and workshop assessing water and sewers, sewer infrastructure funding at the Franklin D. Roosevelt Presidential Library and Museum in Hyde Park on September 6. Our village engineer, Robert Flores, and I both attended, and we heard from federal funding agencies and state funding agencies on funding for New York State water and wastewater projects. And it's like seeing old faces, you know, we've been in touch with a lot of these people over the years. The Red Hook Community Solar Project meetings were held on September 20 and 27 in the Red Hook Village Building. We met with representatives from Sun Common. We reviewed the status of securing an aerial easement from a private property owner for Central Hudson's installation of overhead lines and poles to connect three-phase electrical service to the photovoltaic panels. And we also investigated alternatives to providing this three-phase electrical service to the project that wouldn't include an aerial easement, but the way that it was originally put in the RFP, that's what the aerial easement has to be obtained, that's the direction they're going. We reviewed the construction schedule, so September 30, they began the privacy fence and landscape buffer on the site's southern boundary, and started locating the PV panel posts throughout the existing well field site. We also discussed PV panel delivery schedule, and the Red Hook Community Solar Project is expected to be complete before December 31 of this year, 2019. The intermunicipal task force, both Charlie and I sit on that committee representing the village of Red Hook. The task force met on September 6, 13, 20, and 27 in the Red Hook Town Hall. And we are currently reviewing proposed table for residential accessory uses for short-term rentals, Class 1, 2, and 3. 1 and 2 have to do with a number of bedrooms and hosted existing houses, and Class 3 has to do with hosted accessory buildings. So we're looking into all that, and there is a, an all residence must be the, basically all residence must be the principal and primary residence of the property owners. We reviewed the draft of the summary of current thinking of the intermunicipal task force regarding short-term rentals in the town of Red Hook. And the summary will be presented at a public informational meeting on October 30 in the Red Hook Town Hall. Charlie, you remember this at 7 o'clock?
Yeah, I believe so.
At 7 o'clock in the town hall, so this will be a good opportunity for the public to listen to what the town's preparing. This is for the town and not for the village, so keep that in mind. The goal of the task force is to recommend the adoption by the Red Hook Town Board of a balanced and reasonable regulations governing short-term rentals, allowing citizens to share the economic benefit of the property while protecting and preserving the neighborhood character and long-term housing availability. Get in there. Some of the committees that I sit on and represent the village of Red Hook, there were no meetings of the Red Hook Town Zoning Review Committee or the Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board. The current balance of the Community Preservation Fund as of September 30 is $1,484,405.22. The Salt Kill Watershed Community had a meeting on September 18 in the Elmendorf Inn. Dan Shapley, the director of Riverkeeper's Water Quality Program, introduced the films Undamning the Hudson, which is a short documentary film that showcases Riverkeeper's efforts to restore natural habitat by eliminating obsolete dams. And the second film was A Living River, a film that explores the efforts led by Riverkeeper and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation to restore life within the Hudson River. The Northern Dutchess Alliance Executive Committee met on September 20 in the Red Hook Village Building. We looked at the role of the Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development to track and monitor all short-term rental sites in Dutchess County. The county-led effort is to collect data and encourage municipalities to develop their own regulations and to share the data with other Dutchess County municipalities. And we also discussed the Northern Dutchess Alliance's approach to short-term rentals by providing an outline for local Northern Dutchess municipalities to use when drafting their own short-term rental regulations, and to gather information from the 10 core Northern Dutchess communities to determine if they are working on proposed STR legislation and to establish a common format and outline. The Town of Red Hook Local Water Revitalization Program Update Committee, the LWRP Working Group, met on September 17 in the Red Hook Town Hall. And we are reviewing, actually, sections of the current law that we've already reviewed and updated, and just checking them over for further revisions. We reviewed the New York State Department of State's Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise requirements, and reviewed and discussed and determined the location of the Town of Red Hook's boundary within the Hudson River, which was an interesting discussion.
Oh yeah, where is it?
Down the middle?
It isn't down the middle, it is down the middle, but something is a little askew when we separated from the Town of Rhinebeck over 200 years ago.
Oh, is there some kind of a gore?
There was, I don't know if the proper documentation was filed. So we're looking into, see what the county boundary has for the Town of Red Hook, or is that our shoreline? So these are, and the Department of State is requesting documentation onto where our boundary, the town's boundary actually exists. So this was a new twist that we just found out about. So we're looking into that one. That was kind of fun to see, but all the maps right now and all the other municipalities up and down the river have their boundaries in the middle of the river, on both sides of the Hudson. We also reviewed maps, format, and required information to be included in the amended version of the Red Hook LWRP. And we reviewed and revised the inventory of Hudson River coastal access points, which are very few, but we're looking at both possible advantages and disadvantages of what we have. And finally, I think I kind of hit upon this earlier, but the Red Hook Village Zoning Review Committee met on September 6, 13, 20, and 29 in the Red Hook Village, and we obviously did a couple walkthroughs to see what effects that our new zoning boundaries would include. We discussed the impacts of proposed zoning revisions on existing residential properties in the current R-10,000 zone regarding the proposed amended boundaries of the NMU District and General Business District. We reviewed and revised proposed maps illustrating the expanded General Business District and expanded boundary of the Neighborhood Mixed Use District. And I said the maps are, I've seen them done, we just got to get them printed out and submitted to the board. And we reviewed proposed inclusions of existing single-family and two-family residences currently in the R-10,000 district and the highway business district within the boundaries of the proposed General Business District. So we're looking at a lot of stuff right now and moving forward. And that's my reports.
Good, thank you, Deputy Mayor. As he was reading, I had a couple of questions, as I usually do. Could you take one question on the CPF? I believe I saw in our mail, a notice of a public hearing on the Town of Red Hook's attempt to buy the old St. Sylvia's, but then I hear it's maybe not going to happen.
We originally had met a couple months ago, there were several properties that we were looking at, one were a couple of the Amigla Riley properties that were incorrectly entered on the, onto the CPF project plan. So we corrected those, and also, we included the St. Sylvia Catholic Church in Tivoli on the list. So they are eligible and would qualify if they submitted an application for community preservation funds. As far as I know, no application has been submitted. I know there's been talk of perhaps a private entity purchasing the church, and I guess that includes three properties, but nothing concrete at this point, so from what I've heard.
But you sit on the CPF Advisory Board?
Yes, I do.
Could you restate what you just said about St. Sylvia being on the list? They do...
So originally, they do, they weren't considered in the village of Tivoli, the village of Red Hook submitted properties to be included in the project plan, the town submitted, and the village of Tivoli submitted. So when the original project plan was done and then amended five years later, St. Sylvia still wasn't on it.
Was not.
Was not. So we amended that by adding, which we could do under the authority granted by New York State Legislature to amend that, not on every five year, but on as we needed to amend it. So that property had been, has now been included on, and thus makes them eligible to receive community preservation funds if an application is submitted and reviewed by our committee, and then adopted by the Town of Red Hook Board.
Does that include a purchase, though?
It includes the purchase, yes. It could be an outright purchase or a purchase of the rights of it, but there are certain qualifiers as to what you can do with the property afterwards, so it couldn't be, unless legislation is changed, it could be rented, sold, you know, it has to be used, so...
I didn't pick up the verb, it could not be rented or sold?
It couldn't be rented, leased, or sold, according to the enabling legislation that went through Albany to make the CPF in Red Hook a law.
So what does that mean, the town bought it as a CPF?
If they use CPF funds, they have to adhere to the tenants of the draft, of the legislation that was passed, enabling that by the state of New York, but also adopted by the Town of Red Hook. So there are provisions within that.
But if we extrapolate out, they couldn't sell it or couldn't rent it?
According to my reading of the law, they couldn't lease, sell... According to my reading of the law, they couldn't lease, sell that property, no.
So they'd have to take it for their own use in some shape?
And the CPF is for preservation only and not for restoration? So that means, you know, the funds are available to purchase cultural resources or wetland protections or farmland. Several different ways you can do that, but it does not include renovation of the property. So just what they call preservation and not restoration. If the town wanted to change that, they would have to go back through Albany and probably would trigger another referendum. So when I hear more updates, I'll certainly pass them along.
Thank you. So we got through department and committee reports. We'll move to regular business. It shouldn't be too long, I don't think. Some of the things Brent touched upon, some we'll talk about independently here. The first one, last meeting, we talked about this board taking a stance on a variance being presented to the Town Zoning Board of Appeals regarding a possible heliport down a Rookerby Road corner by Haniford, corner there at the traffic light. We talked about, I think, at a Tuesday meeting, and I did generate the letter and got it out the next day, and they did acknowledge that they have it.
You know, they set a date yet for, I did attend the meeting after you submitted the letter. They were trying to set a public hearing for Seeger, but I don't know where.
You haven't.
Have it gone forward?
They haven't talked to us. Like we said, we're outside that 500-foot rule, so we're not right in the daily mix of things. ZRC update, Brent, we touched on it twice, so we can skip that. We gave the group a precursor and then the full report from Brent. Water loop, what I want to, I guess it's really water and then a bunch of subcategories there. Water, the first subcategory was loop. Brent touched on it and gave the current status of that. Water admin changes, we've talked as a board before, and we're pleased to say things are underway. As we described, we were trying to build more in-house capabilities, and we are finding that we need to develop a game plan, what I call a warboard, something where things such as flushing and valve exercising and working on work orders that are pending, that they're under some administrative head. And we've got something configured right now. We're going to be using a software program we already have that we pay for. It's called Municity. That's the company right here in Red Hook. Their business name is Software Consulting Associates over in a chocolate factory. And we've been using their programs for water, water billing was a big strength of theirs, and then the tax programs. But then they came up with a more intuitive composite program that we can use for water operations, so we've taken some steps to get in there and work on it. Charlie, when he does his report, we see those work orders, and we're getting a little impatient with certain things weren't happening, weren't getting done. So this way we can track it, and it's going to have the ability to shoot photos and GPS locations and things, there's certain things are worked on, and we can get in there and look at it. Brent touched on the WEA grant. That got off as the deadline required, which is good. I think what we don't hear until December-ish, something like that.
Yeah, I just kind of hope to follow up on Friday. Maybe I have, one of the beauties of attending these funding seminars is that I'm with the people who actually reviewed your application.
And I worked somewhat, I was covering the home turf, and he went down to that. And the accepting agency, EFC, Environmental Facilities Corporation, gave us a heads-up. We had passed that, one of the resolutions that were required, but they didn't get the actual clerk's attestation page, so they reached out in the background, and we got that up to them on time and, you know, quickly. So it was kind of good. I think it was, they know us and realize it was not a major error in the application, but for some reason, hold, the resolution was there, but just not the final page of it, so good we got that in. Again, next thing in my recap selection here was solar project update. I could give like even a more recent update. Brent said a start time of project there, and that's true and correct. But I walked it Friday mid-afternoon. It's pretty exciting. The trees are all pretty much planted, that screening shielding effect on the south end of the project. The taller board fence is up on the south end, and like Brent mentioned in his report, they've staked where the posts will be for the actual panels. And they're moving along. I met more of the Sun Common folks from the Vermont office who are like the CEO-type level, and I was impressed by their attitude and their philosophy as far as working with us, working with the neighbors and so forth.
Do you know what the status of the easement is? Were they able to get that?
Oh, we didn't talk specifically about that. What Brent was talking about in his report, it's a little hard to decipher. One reason that area was picked was this pretty easy tapping into Central Hudson's more primary lines there. And Brent and I didn't know it until late, what, two weeks ago or something, but there's, they have to jog underground to connect closer to the town highway garage, I'll call it, than taking a different route to the primary. I think it's somehow it was built into the RFP because the town would like to be able to pull some power from a three-phase capability into the highway garage for some future development there. So it's not something they wanted to change, even though we kind of thought.
We had a better solution.
But it is built into the bid and the RFP and everything, so they're working on that. What the hangup is, is it takes a little couple more steps from a property owner nearby.
I think it was three feet, right?
Yeah, it was.
Or two feet even.
Yeah, it was. It seemed like they were all working together, but it was a little hangup. So that's the solar project. AUD, we talked about when we were in the Treasurer's Report section. Online credit card payments, we'll talk more at a workshop like I noted here, but I had another meeting with official, like connections through Ulster Savings Bank. They have a, called a subcontractor, an outside contractor, who was interesting to me. She's going to put together a proposal, but I still feel like when we try to sell garbage tags, we're back in the 1980s, we only take cash. And then even our water bills and our tax bills, as much as many of us wouldn't pay that with a credit card, I think there is a section of the population that loves to grab travel miles or hotel points or different things that wouldn't mind putting that up on the credit card. Not that they're trying to defer the payment so much, but as they're trying to reap some bonus points. So they're going to put something together. She showed me an example. One of their customers locally is Freedom Propane, I don't know if you pull up, but it's actually where they put a pay system right on the existing website, which would be ours, and then it's all channeled. What they're working with this right now on is to get, to see if they can integrate further with software consultants, associates to Municity Software. The first attempt we made with KeyBank, they could not integrate, and we're trying to find a way where we save a lot of steps internally, not just at the customer end, but at in-house, where if we could go talk to our software and say, hey, Kowalczak paid his water bill, $87.44, instead of our people having to open up a bill and enter a check and different things. So a lot more to talk about at the workshop on that. So we have hit department and regular business items on the agenda. Any other general business from the board that we didn't hit, didn't talk about?
Have we addressed the meeting in November?
We have not. Thank you for reminding us. Today's October 7th. We had originally picked the second Monday in the month so the different department staffs could get data and reports together. So moving to November 4th, being a Monday, that gives you what? A Friday and a Monday for, I guess they could do it in-house. I think Ulster County is pretty good at getting you your data right around.
Yeah.
I mean, the option is go a week after the 11th, which would be 18th, or go a week before. When's Thanksgiving this year? 18th sounds like.
Thanksgiving's the 28th.
28th, yeah.
We have a board meeting already on the 21st when we have a workshop. After Veterans Day, we would have two in a week, which we've done before.
Yeah. I'm inclined to do the 4th, but Election Day would be the next, that next Tuesday, right? So we're not going to be in conflict with that. You're around the 4th?
As far as I know.
4th. Yeah.
I mean, this was pretty last minute here, right?
What's that?
Getting the, all the monthly reports done, and we got it, you know, got all the stuff.
I think the only last minute has been the water guy lately, but we'll have to remind him, and we have to remind Panda we're shifting, but they were good. So it sounds like we're saying the 4th. I'd rather do that myself. So move that, we move to, used to the same verb there. We hold our next monthly board meeting on November 4th instead of the 11th in lieu of the holiday on 11th. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jen.
No public hearings or anything, right?
Not for that one. If you guys, if ZRC comes liver, we could set a public hearing at the workshop to, you know, pick up something, but.
So we need at least 10-day notification, right?
Maybe, right.
Has Victoria started looking into reviewing our list yet? Are she waiting for the maps, I think, right?
I know she has, what you circulated already, but I don't know what she's done. So I think we have hit, show 8:21 PM. I don't see any need for, any need for executive session tonight. We would go to public comment round two for folks that heard the rest of the meeting and want to say something. George, you want to take the mic and do your?
Okay.
Okay.
Hi. For the record, George Beekman, 15 Cherry Street, also the ZBA Chair. One point before I get into my main one is the, if you use credit cards, which is fine, you lose 3% that kicks back, so you have to figure that in, either bump up them or something, or you got to accept the fact you're losing 3%.
Good point, and we talked about that. We would not, as a municipality, add the 3%, we would not delete 3% from our tax revenue or any of the things we're selling. So that would be upfront indicated to the consumer, customer, that they're the one that will incur the 3%. Good point.
That'd be difficult.
Could be, but again, I can't tell you how many people come in and like, oh, you don't take it, and say in garbage tag.
Oh, yeah, you're right. It's super convenient, everybody's doing it, but just that, so you're aware, it's 3%.
Good point, yeah.
My main question and point is about the demonstration last week in the village.
Which one, the climate change?
Climate. Now, this was done by the school, correct?
Students.
Students, yeah.
Did they get a permit for that?
No.
You realize how, that's child endangerment. I can hear them screaming from my house on Cherry Street. I drove up to see because I figured it was the college students again. Luckily, there was, what, on, kind of unusual, 11 o'clock, 11:30, so there was no traffic to speak of, so I came rolled right up to it. You went, you didn't see anything going on until you got right to the intersection. Then you got kids on every corner screaming and yelling, waving. If you get a distracted driver with the truck traffic on that intersection, you would have wiped out 60, 50 kids. And they were just ready to fall into the, off the curb. It was unbelievable. So if the school's pushing this, they should have been charged with child endangerment. That's absolutely ridiculous.
Have you been to the school board?
No, I don't want to waste any time with them. Because this is what they think is accomplishing something, was just unbelievable. Somebody, if one truck was just, was distracted, and somebody blew a light or something, because at that point, like I said, it was very low traffic. So somebody's coming to the intersection at 30 miles an hour. You're not going to stop a tractor trailer, a dump truck, or a bus. If they bump into anything, because they were screaming and yelling, I kind of knew there was something, because I could hear it a block away, but if you were rolling up at 30 miles an hour, you wouldn't know there was something going on until you hit the actual intersection. I think it's a very dangerous situation. The police should have been there, and they should, they should tell the school that, you know, if you want to have a demonstration, do it in the school. You want to teach the kids how to protest or riot, do it on the ball field.
I don't believe it was a school-sanctioned protest, George.
Well, they, well, they were out there 11 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, I think they got reprimanded for it.
I don't think they had a note.
It was organized by somebody.
It was organized by the students.
All right, well, village let it happen, terms of the police department.
Let's talk on two levels. One is.
It didn't last long, and I came back, after I went to the store, I came back, it seemed to be cleared out. But to allow something like that to happen is outrageous.
Well, two levels. The village does not have any permit process for impromptu civil disobedience. It'd be against people's First Amendment rights.
They're kids.
Yeah, but it's.
They don't vote. They don't pay taxes.
They're humans, they're people.
And they don't, and they're not responsible for their actions.
We.
So who is?
We don't have a permit process.
Are there adults around?
Yeah, I think there were, but I don't know. It's, climate change is a big hot issue, and they brought attention to it, and they're bringing it here, too, which is a good thing.
Climate's been changing since the planet's formed. We've had dinosaurs here, we've had glaciers here. Weather, it changes. The equator's moved. The planet shakes for once in a while and moves. They've got these kids brainwashed to think they're going to accomplish something by shutting a, well, they're all running electronics, where do you think the power comes from? There's no common sense here.
I think there's two levels. You can disagree on climate change, we can argue that. The issue is, we don't, there's no permit process. We weren't blindsided. We were, our police do a controlled review, and they are in the background. We're not in there bonking heads or directing it. It's a self-generating, self-propagating protest walk, so, but they didn't violate any of our rules, as long as they do not interfere. And that was borderline, but we have, you know, it's short-term.
That was close, and if somebody had, like you said, one accident there, you would have taken out 40 to 50 kids at one shot. Any corner got hit, they were just rolling out off the curb onto the street, yelling and screaming.
Well, we're not going to go out and arrest 200 kids, and they're entitled to the right to protest. But anyway, thank you, sir. Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. All right. We're, let's see. Anything else come up for anybody to think about before we wrap up? I know the vouchers, Brent and I got through them already. You guys got through them over there. So we have the signatures needed. We would therefore need a motion to pay bills now that they're ordered. Is there such a motion?
Some would.
Is there a second? On favor?
Aye.
Mr. BK, Deputy Mayor, are you ready to work?
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
You would?
Yes, sir.
8:27 PM? I'll second that. On favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.